Related to, so net present that says related to a seasonal or periodic event. So if somebody wanted to set up shop, today would be a great example of it. What if someone wanted to set up a little stand for the last week selling solar eclipse stuff? Or it is an election year, what if somebody wants to set up a tent full of election-related gear for whichever candidate one prefers? What is your feeling on that? I guess is my question.
How is that different than a craft sale, I guess, unless it's somewhere in the city property versus the commercial?
Yeah, so this would just be some, some private entity, some small private business usually. Like Jake's Fireworks, right? They have brick-and-order buildings all over the place. Um, so this would be, so think of this as like a private company coming in and wanting to set up shop like we had with Westministerian Auto Exchange, wanting to set up in the Tractor Supply Park or someplace else and sell, and have a tent for 2024 presidential candidate stuff, whether, again, regardless of who it is. Or like today, if they'd spent the last week setting up, they were just selling stuff related to these solar eclipse t-shirts and hats and like, my question is, would you be good with that, or would you prefer this language to limit it to a holiday? Christmas, Thanksgiving, Halloween, Independence Day?
I think if you try to figure out everything, then nothing's ever gonna, nobody can come into town, nobody can do anything. That would be the overall best solution, right? Because you can't think of everything that somebody would want to come in and do a setup for. So I think that we just need to take a common sense approach to it and say, okay, like John said, you know, seasonal and what else?
He said seasonal and periodic or, I wouldn't even say holidays.
Yeah, keep that, I would keep that out, but you know, I don't necessarily want it vague, but if you try to think of everything you're gonna have, it's a real subject.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I, I just don't want to have a situation where somebody sets up the Labor Day mattress sale, and everyone comes in and says, why did you guys do that? And then I want to give them an answer, whether it's yes or no, at least, you know, I want to make sure that we're on the same page here and that I'm capturing what.
Well, that's where I think with Jessica too, right? With her input, you're gonna know more how the language can, can and cannot be written. And then, you know, after you've had that conversation, we can dive into it and say, okay, we, you know, we like this, or gives us all time to, you know, think of a gazillion different things that can or can't happen.
So, oh, sorry, Marty, I thought you were done. Um, so if I, I kind of would factor the history of what brought this on, and I remembered part of it as being the resident. So, um, but part of this was brought on because of this outside company coming in and creating competition, well, a disturbance, but also competition with established businesses, right? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
It wasn't necessarily competition. What, what, what it boiled down to is, is when we had all of the dealers come in and explain their reasoning of the why was. They came, they sold basically, in their opinion, under false pretense. Where these people for warranty went to our dealerships expecting warranty, which our dealerships didn't sell, they reused cars, and it upset a lot of people. So when they came back the second time around, it was when they went to Tractor Supply. Again, they faced opposition about it, and at the end of the day, it became a, a safety concern of pedestrians walking, vehicles driving around in that small parking lot, several other things, right? And that's, you know, that's where we came to the conclusion. And we also, at that point, noticed that our ordinance was not up to date, it was a little vague. So it was decided to look at it, tighten it up. I know, I know Andy's been wanting to do this for a while, so.
Cause I'm just wondering.
There's a lot of things that will pop up all of a sudden and.
Sure. No, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the basis. Cause like I said, I had looked through the minutes from, it looks like it was June and July of last year. Um, so what I'm wondering though is, do we want things that, as long as they're not causing a nuisance, to bring traffic to town? If it's not causing a nuisance, it's not taking away things from other established businesses in town? I mean, we're making fun of the Memorial Day Mattress Day Sale, but there's nobody else in town selling mattresses.
Over Easter.
Over Easter or whatever that is, Valentine's Day. Um, Valentine's Day would be a good time to sell mattresses, in case anybody's wondering if they want to tie me down for the fundraiser. You could pass that along to me, if you know who's in charge of that. Um, anyways, um, but, you know, as we're talking about it, do we really want to limit it? Or do we want to make sure that they're following the protocol of not being a nuisance, making sure they're respectful? You know, following all of these other, you know, maybe putting in more guidelines of things they have to follow as opposed to when and what they're selling? I'm wondering.
Yeah, we're, I think we're all a little skittish after this last situation.
Well, I know that, um, the political stuff came up. Do we want someone selling, you know, stuff around election time? And I believe there was a tent that was set up last year, two years ago, whenever the last election thing happened. I believe there was someone that was selling some political propaganda and stuff too, that caused some concern as well. But some of theirs was using foul language and stuff too.
It was in front of the old town Chevrolet building.
Yeah.
And they just showed up and set up. They, they got shut down as soon as they.
Right. But I'm wondering if we instead build more structure around that than when and what? I don't know. That's just my thought.
Basically, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make something for the legal people to abide by, because you're always gonna have the people that are just gonna set up and go.
Right. But do I care if it's around the holiday, as long as it's filling a need, not causing a concern, and offering a service or a good that is not already being provided in the town?
We're still in public hearing.
Sorry. No, it's okay. No, I just wanted to bring up something too. I think you're right.
Do you state your name and?
I'm sorry, Beryl Barkus, 215 West Main Street. I also own a ability, weavers. We had a weaving fair a few years ago. Sounds like what you're saying, if it has to be seasonal, that would have wiped out our ability to do that. Um, we had 15 vendors by our store, and then the antique store behind us also did some, some things for the community and was done during COVID to bring people to town. So be careful in limiting.
Seasonal?
Seasonal, because we wouldn't have qualified as seasonal. We were just.
Well, season could be spring. That's why if you leave it vague, if you leave it vague enough, I think.
I think so. I like, I like this. Personally, I like the seasonal. Just leave it.
And we did put you on, you did ask for a road closure on that city property.
I did. I didn't have to come to planning to do that though.
Right. And you just came to, that was council's decision to.
Was it? I don't know. I thought I just called Sue and said, hey, can I do this? I don't know. Just, just throwing that out there, that you might want to not limit it too tightly.
Maybe we should have the attorney look at it and see if there is any holes that she would close. And, uh, we think about it for till next month?
That's fine.
Sure.
Is there any other public comment?
I was looking there.
Sure.
You know he's gonna say something.
I know, that's why.
Uh, Eric Barkus, and to your point, I totally agree with you. Maybe Andy can clarify, but when an entity wants to set up a business, they're, they have to meet six criteria. And I'm sorry to forget what you call them, but they're, you, they have to be answerable as far as security and pedestrian safety, and so there are, I think, those mechanisms in place. But I, I agree with you, and your liability insurance and stuff.
So Jessica's got to say.
Hey, there's, is there any other more public comments?
Yeah, I would like to close this public hearing.
I think there should be a motion to table this for a month, so there's, the record has some action in here, so just motion to table, I'll bring it back.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, table this until next month?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Also, for any other discussion? Okay, I'll in favor, say aye. Aye, I'll oppose the same. Okay, we look forward to seeing that next month then. Okay, public hearing is closed. Uh, master plan update. Uh, you all should have received some, uh, stuff from Andy, right?
Yep. So, uh, this is, I thought in advance, a little bit of a homework assignment for you all. So what we have here is, um, we have, we're almost all the way through all of our various public comment and public input activities that we've done for the master plan. So we went, starting last summer, we did the, um, we went to one of the concerts. We were gonna go to the second concert, but we got ran out. Uh, went to the middle school, we had visioning sessions with the planning commission and with the DDA. Um, we went to the expo a couple of weeks ago. Marty made sure that we ran out of every supply that we had. It was great. We had.
Pennies, cause you've never.
Ton of feedback. Um, yeah, it was, so it was a really successful event. And then next week, we have city council and the Parks Commission, our kind of local area visioning activity as well. So, uh, so in a couple of weeks then, we will have like a, like a public engagement report that'll summarize all the feedback and all the comments that we've gotten from, from the public. That is, and so the purpose of that report is going to be to inform you guys in how you make and write policy for the master plan. The primary way that you do that is, is through the goals and objectives, and so that's what this worksheet is. So this isn't something that you need to do right now, we don't need to spend time on it right now. Uh, but this is something that we'll, at different points, need to talk about at the next meeting. And so what we did is we took the goals and objectives from the 2007 plan and dropped them right into this table here. And so basically, we just want you to go through each of the goals and objectives statements and indicate whether they should be kept or removed, or if they should be combined with something else, or if they should be revised, or if you want to add new stuff, um, feel free to do that as well. So there's a bunch of different categories. So on page, um, you know, starting on page two, we have growth and development is the category, then there's a goal underneath that that talks about rules, economic identity. There's another one that talks about cooperative efforts with surrounding townships for industrial development. On the third page, there's, uh, there's a heading called community image, and there's a goal there with a couple of objectives. On page four, we have the heading of land use that has a goal with several objectives underneath each one. On page five, there's transportation as a heading, and there's two goals in each one of those. So again, you can kind of see the pattern here. Basically, we want you to evaluate what you currently have in the master plan. Cause I think a lot of what yours in your current plan is fine. It doesn't need to be changed that much. Uh, but it's been almost 20 years, and so I do think that there's going to be some room to, to adjust things. Maybe some things you pretty much accomplished, and you might want to just take them off the list. There's gonna be some areas where you want to add, add new stuff that isn't even talked about at all in here, right? So there's gonna be something where, um, we might be wanting to encourage a certain type of housing or riverfront development, or I don't know, something in here that's not really adequately addressed. We want that to be added here, so. For the next meeting, I want to kind of talk about what your, we'll kind of go through what you all come up with. Um, and as soon as we get it done, we will distribute to you the public engagement report that contains all the input from the public that we received at all the events, began the survey, and all the comments, and all the counts for the penny jars, and everything that we've done. And kind of package that up into a report that you can read through, and, and, and we'll provide some analysis too. But in reading through that, you'll really be able to glean what people are concerned about, how they want the city to grow. And so sort of with that in the back of your mind, we want you to tackle this worksheet for the next meeting. From there, we'll start really, you know, getting, you know, we'll be getting down to the last couple of chapters of the plan. And that's really where we're going to be doing the strong planning, you know, part of the document. So are there questions about anything in here, what we're asking you to do?
When you say combine, I was like, we're gonna combine, A and B combined or?
Yeah, so I mean, sometimes, um, people will come up with ways that you can sort of combine some of the goals or some of the objective statements if they're related. You know, they'll want to combine it into one statement, and then they'll give them room to put in a couple of ones. That might not be viable here, given how this is written, but you always need, there is an option.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that is all that I have for now, um, and I expect that we'll be spending a decent chunk of our next meeting going through and talking about this.
So I, and when we were up there, Eric notes, Andy did a wonderful job. I helped by getting all the pennies gone, cause he said he never used all the pennies. Let me help you with that. I have a picture of what is your vision for Main Street that we took, and if anybody'd like to see it. And it was actually kind of fun, but I don't think the people quite got the sticky note concept because we had 40 Aldis put on here, and it was actually kind of fun. But people were enjoying it, and what I noticed there was is, uh, even people that didn't live in the town, in the city, once Andy explained to them that you're helping us get better at what we do, I think they were generally happy to help. And it went, well, do I put one penny in one? Or Andy's like, no, you can put as many pennies per jar as you would like. And I seen a couple of them jars, which I'm curious to see the results, that were quite full. So, good job.
Yeah, we probably had 100 and 150 people do the penny jars, I would guess.
Who's there all these?
So it was, it was, it was, it was, I was pretty happy with how it turned out. We had that. We had the West Main exercise where people could basically just, from railroad tracks to the city limits, just sort of what's your vision, how do you want things to be improved? And yet, some people just, and this happens all the time, they just say, I want an Aldi, or I want a, you know, IHOP, or whatever the business is that they have. Yeah, KFC or Wendy's or something. They will do that, but, but even when they write something like that, a lot of people, it didn't have to be Aldi. They were just like, we want a small-scale grocery or something that can be with Meyer, that we can just swing in and grab something, you know, something like that. So that helps us to, you know, all of that comments, you know, we can, you know, I can't write Aldi in the plan specifically, but we can talk about the types of uses that Aldi would fit into and what they're looking for, and that I think can be helpful.
Or like a small, a small grocery, right, that only has limited footprint, but offers a lot of necessity of it, so.
Yeah, and some people don't talk about businesses at all. They're talking about, um, you know, this trail out really needs to connect over here. This sidewalk is terrible, it needs to be repaired, or traffic needs to slow down, or maybe fewer lanes or more lanes, or, you know, all, all kinds of, of different topic areas. So I think it's, it's helpful for us just to kind of hear this broad, you know, idea, idea gathering from the, from, from the community. So yeah, we'll have the results of all of it. We'll get that out to you as soon as we're done, uh, next week. That'll wrap it up, except for the draft open house. But we'll have a lot of, a lot of information to sit here, so we'll pass that out as soon as we can.
Okay, so you want us to bring this back, fill it out, and you text whatever, whatever, whatever?
If I could, Eric Barkus, first of all, I'd like to recognize Andy here, he did a great job at the expo. I did a two-hour shift for the city. I think he did the whole, the whole thing, so I paid the one or two, so good job. And he was very good with the crowd. The reason I'm here, Marty and I attended the Michigan Municipal League Convention three weeks ago, and I, I attended the housing presentations. There were four architects, and this was all afternoon. And their main theme, uh, they talked a lot about many communities are improving their master plans right now. And so you're right on board on this, and they kept, um, one, one, I had three takeaways that I just wanted to pass on. One was that you, as a board, need to decide when you update the master plan, whether you're going for, um, shorter-term helps for developers or longer-term growth of properties. And I don't totally understand this, and, and I haven't had a chance to ask Andy about this, but there was sort of a distinction when you rewrite your master plan, whether you want to make shorter-term growth or longer-term, uh, increase in property values. And again, I'm sorry, I don't totally understand that, but I have the architect's name and the presentations, if, if that brings any bells, number one. Number two, they kept talking about, uh, setting up neighborhood enterprise zones, and I don't know if that fits into the master plans, but a number of communities were re, were improving their housing using these enterprise zones. And then lastly, you know, they were using a lot of missing middle grants. So, uh, again, if you want, uh, those presentations, I, I have access to that, but you're, you're right on track for improving the master plan right now, so thank you.
Eric brings up a thing I was thinking about too. I, I don't know the legal aspects of this, but could you differentiate items in the master plan on things that are more subject to change at a quicker pace versus, you know, snail pace and the lastest role of other ordinances that really don't change? I mean, can we differentiate that set of different timelines?
Yeah, so what, what we often do, and what a lot of communities do in their master plans is when you sort of get to the end, you have a, a, a list of stuff to do, so. In this plan too, at the end of it, and I'm not sure what the list looks like yet, but it will be, um, a, a list of specific tasks that the city needs to accomplish. And your current plan has this too, it just isn't that long of a list, we've gotten a lot of it done. But it'll say, you know, major zoning ordinance to do this, it'll say establish a, I don't know, corridor improvement authority for that, or it'll give you a whole list of things, and, and, and to those, we can sort of attach, this is a short-term priority, this is a long-term priority, recognizing that some of these things are gonna be really long-term. I mean, some of this, and some of the other communities that, that where we work, they have priorities about, you know, why in Maine you're modifying their main street or, or something like that, which if that's in Emerald, like it is here, that might be a 20-year priority to get on the list and then get it done and work with them and get the design you want and on and on and on. So, um, yeah, we'll talk specifically in the, in the plan about things that are really long-term goals versus things where it's a short, short-term, hey, let's, let's get this done right now. So like your old plan, one of the things that we did pretty early on, within the first five years or so, was adopt the mixed-use zoning district that we currently have. That was written in there as a specific thing to do, adopt a mixed-use zone, create a mixed-use zoning district in your zoning map in your ordinance, and we did that. It took us several months, but, um, we got it done, and I think the, the results have been, have been pretty good overall for how that went. But that was something where we, there was a specific direction about what to do, and then we did it. And that was a fairly small thing. It only took a few months. Some of these might take years, and so we'll talk about those and acknowledge the reality that some of these things aren't gonna happen. Especially the ones that are gonna involve MDOT or Eagle or, you know, whoever. You know, these are 10, 20, 30-year horizons on some of these projects. Some of them will be quick.
Okay. Um, I have a question. What is the difference between staff report and commissioner remarks?
Staff report?
Staff report is something that Sue and/or myself would report to you. And commissioner remarks is, you guys, as commissioners, can say whatever you want. Within, I mean technically, whatever you want, but you know, within the boundaries of good decorum and so forth.
Okay. Um, I look forward, thank you, Andy, again, for spending Saturday out there with everybody too. Uh, staff report. Sue?
I have nothing further.
And Andy?
Good.
Okay, commissioners, uh, I'm late. Uh, gonna expound on what you were talking about before?
Uh, no, I mean, I think I just said what I said, because it was online. My, I, I think the general sentiment is that as a, uh, planning commission, you know, you're trying to engage community and create, um, you know, uh, a sense of, uh, community involvement. And so, you know, at the very least, to the degree that, you know, everything we do is perceived as somewhat constructive, you know, you want to try to at least, um, you don't want to create bad vibes with a, um, awkwardly, you know, transferring, um, leadership and in a way that led to, you know, like someone's complete disengagement and stuff like that, so. Just, uh, I think I, I, you know, I hear the comments on it, I just think it was poorly handled on our part.
The, uh, as I said, I was, I've been thinking about this for quite some time, just the, it's an election, so it's kind of, has to be abrupt a little bit, because we're like, okay, let's elect new officers, and if there's two people and there's discussion, and we vote. But then also the, the change of hands was way too abrupt for myself. And I have run meetings in the past, so, but, but I had to jump right in. And even though I was gonna be elected, and all of a sudden, here I am, trying to run a meeting without an exchange of, okay, this is how we do it, you know, this is what this is. It was very, uh, very cold shower. I don't know, I would like to discuss this at a later date maybe, about possibly a better way to do it, whether it be in the year prior, say, hey, what do you think? Do you still want to do this? Do you wanna, do you wanna change hands, and then give at least a month to the new people to get used to how things are run, maybe, or how things, what things even are? Versus at your meeting, ooh, ooh. I think that would, uh, help new officers if they were elected, and maybe help the transition.
Yeah, I think just more discussion was necessary there. Like, it doesn't, I don't know how it's gone in the past. I've not got a lot of experience with, with these things and so on, but I guess my assumption was that it had been talked about to some degree among the big group or whatever, and that, you know, and then, um, but apparently it was just sort of, uh, everybody dealing with it there on the spot, and like, you know, that's not, when someone's put in a bunch of their own personal time for a couple of years on it and so on, it's like, you know, it's like a big.
It roosted a lot. I mean, I, I was, I was taken back that everybody was like, yep, 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 yep. I was like, whoop, whoop. I was, I was a little bit like.
I think everybody assumes like, oh, there's been a discussion here that I wasn't really, oh, okay, that's under, you know. And like, it seems to be normal that like every couple of years, you would, you would move on to like get a fresh, someone, you know, someone running the show or wherever, like it doesn't, I don't have any problem with it, I just think you do them in the courtesy of like talking about it beforehand, creating, you know.
Maybe that should be a, maybe that should be a norm maybe, to your service or, uh, to your rotation. I know other organized, uh, entities, you know, you served X amount of years and then you. then you had to take time off as an officer.
There are a couple of things that we can do, I think is a suggestion. So one is that Mike requested that we, we will do this, but that we provide some training. You guys specifically, we have two planning commission members now who are gonna need to be proud up to speed on all of this stuff. So that's something that we will be working on. But then I think in addition to that, it might be helpful that when we have a light agenda, that we spend some time and just kind of go through in some early morning, what we go through our planning commission bylaws, in terms of what's in there, what you gotta do, how the agendas, cause that spells out how the agenda is put together, what order it's in, when and how you call a meeting and election of officers and all of this kind of stuff. So I think that might be helpful if we just go through there. And I can help you from my, my seat as someone who goes through a lot of these meetings and a lot of different places. You know, I think I can just sort of share what seems to work for other communities. And of course, you're free to do whatever you want, but at least I can give you some examples of what works and maybe some things that doesn't seem to work very well. But those are two things that I think, especially the bylaws are helpful just from, for, for you guys knowing kind of the mechanics of running a meeting and listening and motions and segments. And when you do a roll call vote versus a voice vote or how the agenda is set or when you have to worry about quarts and conflicts of interest. If you only have five people here and three people vote for something, does that mean it passes? I don't know. You gotta look at the bylaws for that kind of thing. So it'll answer a lot of questions. And I think it'll sort of help, help bring you guys all up to speed and we can provide copies of those as well. So that's something we can bring up at a future meeting when we have the time.
Yeah. And if you, as has been said before, the city budgets money every year for planning commission to go take classes and learn. When Eric and I go, there's classes we can take, I take personally because I sit on this board. So to keep me up to speed and, you know, knowledgeable about the different things coming down. The other thing is, is I don't know if you guys are all receiving the Michigan Planning Magazine. You are?
Yeah.
I do. So, you know, there's lots of good information in that too. It always gives you times where you can go take a class. Like I said, there's money budgeted for it. I would like to see everybody at these classes.
Thank you. Again, thank you. Welcome. And do you have any thoughts? First meeting?
Not yet.
So, no. Good. Not good, but good. John?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, I am good. I think I spoke in my line. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
How many motion?
I'll support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Aye, go.